Good morning, everyone. It is 8:30. I will call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item of business this morning is a approval of the agenda. There are some changes that I'd like to have noted in the motion. The first would be, number one, would be an acceptance of the letter of resignation from county engineer David Overbow. The second would be a request to move forward with the advertising for that position. And the third would be the permission to name Justin Sorum as the interim county engineer. And then the fourth item would be the deletion of item 11, the closed session at the end of the meeting.
Move approval with additions and deletions.
A motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve with the three additions and one deletion.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is carried. Citizens to be heard this morning. Are there any citizens wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Any citizens wishing to address the board? If not, Mr. Larson, has any citizen reached out to you for this portion?
I have not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item, if we could, please take the three additions before we get to item number two, we're a couple of minutes ahead of, sorry, approval of the bills. The next item is approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
A motion by Commissioner Kaylee to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. The next item in the packet is the minutes from April 26th.
Move approval.
A motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion?
Yeah, there's one slight correction.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Sorry. In my committee reports at the end, it says Northwest Initiatives. It was West Central Initiative. So just very minor correction. Yep.
The motion and second, see, approve of the change. Commissioner Gross?
Yeah.
Okay, everyone else? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries. Item, the first agenda item, Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. As you mentioned, we have three agenda additions today. All of them are interconnected. Yesterday, yesterday morning, I received a notification from David Overbow, our county engineer, and his desire to resign from his position. In talking with our county attorney, because this position has been an appointment position, we felt that it would be right that we brought it forward for the board to accept that resignation from Mr. Overbow. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Board questions? Discussion?
Do we have an option not to accept it, or, I mean, if we don't accept it, what would happen?
You would still resign, Commissioner Gross. I mean, we really don't have a...
There's no option. Okay, we're good.
Correct.
Thank you.
I move to accept the letter resignation.
Motion to accept the letter from Commissioner Ebinger.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Kaylee. Just want to formally thank Mr. Overbow for his service to the county. He's been here, I think, over 20 years, and I know a lot of important projects have gone forward with his collaboration and leadership, so thank him and wish him well in his future endeavors. Mr. Campbell?
I too want to tell Dave a big thank you for his work. I know I served with Dave on the Highway Tracking Committee for many years, and like you said, he's, you know, he's brought a lot of good, important projects through, so I wish him well in his next adventure.
Any further discussion? So a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is carried. Item two, Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the board's action there, we would be requesting moving forward with advertising and looking to fill that county engineer position.
Move approval?
A motion to approve the request from Commissioner Kaylee.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Campbell. Any questions?
I do have one question.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Sorry. Should, I think the assumption is that Justin is going to be our intern, we'll get to that, but should we hire internally for that spot? Would we need backfill, I guess is the question?
But if we hired internally, yes, we would. We would need to have backfill.
Should that be added to this?
That wouldn't come until the...
That wouldn't come until later. Okay.
I think it should also be noted, sometimes with department heads, well, always with department heads, we have board interaction on those interview panels, and certainly because Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Campbell have served on the highway tracking for a significant amount of time, it would be my hope that those two would be part of the interview process as well. We'll see how the application period goes and what the timeline for that would be. Questions? We have a motion and a second on the table for the further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Item three this morning would be the permission to name Assistant County Engineer Justin Sorum as the interim county engineer.
I'd move to name Justin Sorum the interim county engineer.
We have a motion to approve the request from Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion?
And just to clarify, Madam Chair, we would be offering that pay increase to the Step One, Grade 27 of the, of that, of the grid.
That would be included in my motion.
Okay, a second as well? Okay, further discussion. Commissioner Kaylee?
So then, when we go ahead and hire that position, would Justin then go back to his previous pay grade, or how does that work?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kaylee, yes, that would be the case. In the event that Justin did apply for the job and wasn't selected, he would return to his other position.
Thank you. And Mr. Larson, that is in alignment with how we've typically done other positions.
That is correct.
For instance, the correctional facility. Any other discussion? Commissioner Campbell?
I'm assuming you have a timeline in mind where we'd like to get this position filled.
Yeah, we'll get moving as soon as, right after board to get this advertised. You know, not that there's a slow time for the highway department, but this is about as busy of a time as you can get.
Well, that's why I raised the question, because, you know, we have one less body there now, so to speak, and we need, I just, you know, and we're going to have a highway tracking meeting after, and I think we'll have a chance to talk to Justin, but I'd want to make sure that, that in the short term, sometimes this can take a period of time, even when you do find a candidate, you know, if it isn't internally, then, then you have to allow them time to, and that can, days can turn into weeks, and weeks can turn into months.
Sure.
And I just want to make sure that we don't end up short. So we'll, maybe, you know, Commissioner Gross and I can talk to Justin about that on our highway tracking meeting today, but I just wanted to get an idea from you how rapid we can do this.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get things moving right away after highway tracking this morning.
Thank you.
I think it might also be helpful, certainly with the highway tracking and with Mr. Sorum, to identify if there's areas where it might make sense to hire additional help or contract for services just in the interim. I know, I know that with so many different projects that we're about ready to start, hopefully when the bids come in favorable, that, that might be helpful to ease kind of the strain on what's going on.
Commissioner Mojo, that's kind of where I was heading with my questions, and it maybe, it just might be that maybe we can come forward with a recommendation next week or something, if it looks like it's needed, to do exactly that.
Yeah, and I think certainly it would make sense to have some sort of board motion to approve up to an amount. If we're having a savings with staffing right now being short, that might be helpful so that you don't have to wait for board in a week or something like that. Not this week, but going forward. Okay. Any further discussion? We need to vote, right, Colleen? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Steve. Congratulations, Justin. Our next item this morning, item two, I apologize for the delay, is an update from the FMWF Chamber of Commerce on the initiatives. We have Shannon Full, the President and CEO. We have Mason Radamacher with as well.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Thanks for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Shannon Full, President of the Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo Chamber of Commerce. We come before you today just to give a little bit of update on the progress and the work that the chamber has been doing along with many of our partners in the region. So I'll reference first, just as a, as a reminder, the, the chamber's mission is to be catalyst for growth and prosperity for our entire region. We do that through numerous different ways. In your packet, you will see our programs and initiatives. This focuses on the five cornerstones that we have, focus our work on. All of these are done with significant collaboration and partnership. Both public sector and private sector partnership is critical to the chamber's success and essentially for our region to grow and prosper. In the business vitality side of it, this is the work that we do oftentimes jointly with other organizations like Downtown Moorhead, Inc., and the Moorhead Business Association. This is focused really on the growth of our companies, providing them programs and services specifically around connecting, convening, curating, and really giving them the necessary tools so that they can grow their own businesses. Public policy and advocacy is a very significant part of the work that we do. My VP of Public Policy, Kathryn Grinberg, will give you an update in just a minute on that. And talent and workforce, as we all know and hear a lot about, the number one issue facing our companies now is that ability to attract, retain, and develop talent. So we have a significant division and initiative that focuses on that work. My Vice President of Talent and Workforce, Mason Radamacher, will also give an update in just a minute. The community enhancement cornerstone is really focused on multiple different areas where we work with the public sector on major projects, but also private sector companies as well. Some of these, I may just highlight one for today for the sake of time. We do a significant amount with our military, so supporting our National Guard efforts, both the Minnesota National Guard as well as the North Dakota National Guard, in a lot of different ways, whether that be through policy and lobbying for the necessary resources, but also providing our soldiers and guardsmen the necessary kind of trainings and connections that they need to be successful in the region as well. And finally, the fifth cornerstone is really the only internal-focused cornerstone. We know that in order to achieve our mission, we have to make sure that we have a high-performing organization. So this is the investment that we make in, in making sure we have the highest level of organizational excellence. So I'll now turn it over to Kathryn Grinberg, our VP of Public Policy, to give you an update on our policy and advocacy work.
Thanks, Shannon. Good morning, Chair and everyone on the commission. Appreciate you taking the time to hear some updates from us this morning. Just want to first start off saying thank you so much for your collaboration in all of our public policy efforts. It is critical to have the Clay County Commission as a partner for us, just as it is for our businesses and the other cities in the area as well. So thank you for your continued partnership in our policy efforts. In our first point on the paper in front of you under the public policy side is the Moorhead Area Day at the Capitol, and again, want to give a thank you. We were really thrilled to have two of the commissioners, Commissioner Ebinger and Kaylee, come along with us on this first annual Moorhead Area Day at the Capitol, and I'm sure they've shared with some of you some of the outcomes of that and how it went, but we really had a very successful Moorhead Area Day at the Capitol, and the intent with this was to bring all community partners, the cities, the county businesses, other business associations along to be able to come forward to the legislators, both our regional legislators as well as other ones across the state, to be able to have a unified message on some of these legislative priorities in our region specifically. So we were very much welcomed in St. Paul, and it went very well to be able to speak with all three of our district four legislators, as well as many of the committee chairs for other important and very critical committees as far as capital investments, workforce taxes, some of those kind of committees. So it was a very successful trip. We look forward to doing that again next year and continuing this and growing it, so we hope to have your support again next year through a couple of the commissioners or more of you attending. We would welcome you to come with us. I wanted to include a picture on here. We had some great pictures from the day, but too many words, so I didn't get to fit it in on this one, but we hope you'll look further into some of the great pictures from that and share those as well. Also, just wanted to quickly go over some of our legislative priorities, and I know you are all keenly aware on what's going on at the legislature as well, but just wanted to give a little bit of a background on what we are doing as efforts for some of these critical areas and areas that we may be able to partner with you more on. So the first one is the workforce funding. I know that you're all very aware of that as you're integral in that one. This is the Career Workforce Academy funding and workforce overall, and so it really goes through the counties as it sits right now written. It would go through the counties and be able to be where there are career academies kind of as the hub, but then really have workforce infrastructure funded kind of all around it, the ancillary pieces of it. So it would be one proposal that would come to the, the commission and be able to be approved. That would show that we have city partners, we have nonprofit partners, we have business partners. Everyone is in alignment on one workforce strategy. So that one is really key, and that is something that we worked with the Moorhead Superintendent, Dr. Lunick, on creating that kind of from the ground up with Representative Markort, and he has kind of spearheaded that. So we are kind of one of the first in the state to be bringing this kind of an idea forward, and the model is being very well-received by the legislators, so we're hopeful that that will be approved. Currently, right now, it's in conference committee. It's in a tax bill, so that's helpful that we have the tax chair. So Representative Markort is, like I said, spearheading that. So we look forward to an outcome on that, and we're working hard to make sure that they see all of our partners, including the county as yourselves, are on board. So thank you for your, your support and attentiveness in those, those meetings as well. We appreciated that. The small business grant applications, this one has popped up as one of the issues that we saw through COVID and are continuing to see, which is the residency requirement on some of these programs, grants, those sorts of things. This one is included in the House Omnibus Workforce Bill, and it is a grant that would go to small businesses for recovery. The, the issue that we're seeing with it, although the intent is, is great, is that the residency requirement requires that the owner of the business must be, the owner that is 50% or more must be living in Minnesota. The issue that we're seeing with that is as a border community, and you all know very well, we sometimes have business owners that live on the other side of the river, but they are dedicated to being a Minnesota business. They hire Minnesota people, they're paying Minnesota taxes, they're under the regulations of businesses of Minnesota, so we're really trying to open that up and have some language added in for contiguous counties or something of that nature to allow this to be a little bit more advantageous for border communities like ourselves, so that we're really giving our businesses here in the region that same opportunity as other businesses across the state. So we'd look for any support that you can grant in that. Again, that one's in conference committee. There are two different granting kind of programs that the House and the Senate have, and this, this kind of provision of the residency requirement is in both of them, written the same. So no matter which one kind of goes through, it's still going to be an issue that we want to address and bring forward. So we've had good reception for that one as well with, with many of, not just our legislators, but across the state, hearing us out on that. And then the last one's, Unemployment Insurance Trust Fund, I won't spend much time on because I know that you're all aware, and that one was already passed, but that one was important, especially for our small businesses as they come out of COVID, to be able to not see those tax increases and use that surplus on replenishing the, the fund. So that was very important to get passed. We like to take a little bit of credit because we were there when it happened, so that's pretty fun, that we were there when they actually passed it and signed it. So that was a, kind of a treat to be able to see up close. So. The last three are all bonding requests, flood mitigation for Moorhead, Dilworth Fire Hall, and Weld Hall. Again, I know you're all very well aware of these. We have been working very hard with our local legislators to be able to spread the message of what these are. The Dilworth Fire Hall, we went out and shot a video at the Dilworth Fire Hall to be able to demonstrate and show the legislators what some of those areas are that are concerns for our region, and that was also received. Well, we've heard from a lot of the legislators out there, oh, we've seen the video. So that was great to hear, yeah. Commissioner Kaylee had that conversation a few times with people. So that was, that was great to hear. And then flood mitigation, of course, that's always on our radar. We've been strong supporters of, of the diversion and flood mitigation overall, so we continue to be, have our leadership on that, as well as Weld Hall has been kind of top of line for many times. So we're, we're looking forward to supporting that. So other than these legislative priorities, we're weighing in where needed on border city sorts of issues, but these are kind of the top priorities through session, and all are tracking well, so that's good to hear. And again, just want to thank you all for your support. Any area where you think that you could partner with us on these, sign on to coalition letters, we would welcome your support as well. In that way, it is really great to go forward in a collaborative approach, and it definitely sends a message in St. Paul that we are all on the same page and we're partners in this.
Thank you very much for that, Kathryn. I want to applaud the chamber. I think this has been a discussion point that we've encouraged you to seek additional advocacy in St. Paul for those of us out here, and so we really appreciate this. This is wonderful. Thank you for having a Moorhead Area Day at the Capitol. I am definitely grateful that we had representation there. In terms of continuing to advocate for our needs, I, I really do think this board today should take action to have you send a letter on our behalf endorsing all of these pieces. I know we're less than two weeks from the end of session, and I, I think as we continue to advocate for the needs, that certainly would be helpful to take a stance again as a full board for encouraging support of these pieces. So I, I hope the board can make that motion at some point after discussion, but I know Commissioner Campbell raised his hand.
Yeah, I, I, thank you. I just have a question on the workforce funding piece. I noticed you show there the House File 4198, and that's in conference committee. Was there a, was there any type of Senate file that was attached to that as well, and is this what was passed forward into conference committee? Is that why that's the only file listed?
Yeah, Commission Chair and Commissioner Campbell, that is correct. It is not something that was in a provision in the Senate side. It's in the tax bill, so they are, you know, both companion bills, but not specifically on this provision. There's not a companion bill. We did speak, we, we sat down with Senator Nelson, the Chair of the Tax Committee on the Senate side, to discuss this, and she had a very similar PTEC program a couple sessions ago, so she kind of lit up when she saw the model and was interested in it. So that is where that currently sits in conference committee.
Thank you, and I, I really appreciate Commissioner Mojo's comments and suggestion about a motion to go forward, and I, I really think that we need to, you know, hit home with some of the Senate legislatures that are close to our vicinity, too. I think of Senator Ingerbritson, for example, out of Alexandria, and, and some others, that I think it's important that we, we, because we do partner with them in a lot of things here, and I think it would be important for them to hear the message of Clay County and the significance of, of this project that could be statewide, could, could feel positive impacts from it. So, I will wait and we'll do your motion.
Okay.
After we hear from...
Questions? Discussion? Commissioner Ebinger?
Yeah, just an observation. I haven't participated in this. Been up to the Capitol here several times when I was on the Board of Directors, Chief's Association, and I've never been a part of an effort like this. It was as well-prepared, had appointments set up with key people, just very, very structured. We got in there, everybody got on the same page, everybody was informed on what the, what the key points were on these things, and we got in there in marching order, and you know, everybody's been to the Capitol, you know, you have anywhere from five minutes to 15, and maybe one or two, if you're catching them outside the, the chamber. We had our spokespeople's, our message, it was delivered. It was done in a clean, concise, and unified way. I was very impressed with this. If this is reflective of your, of the first-time effort at this, I just think future years are going to be better. So it was, it was worth our, our investment in this.
Thank you. Board questions?
Can I just have one more?
Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. I just want to, while we're talking about this, I, I know these are the 22 priorities, which I think are really important, but I also really appreciate that what the chamber always does in terms of what's critical to us is our border cities legislation that goes on in St. Paul. And with these changing times, I often wonder if, if what we have there is satisfactory or where we need room to improve on, on those issues, and working together with the chamber and maybe the, the Moorhead Business Association and others like that Downtown Moorhead, Inc., and some of those places to, to make sure that based on what's transpired over the last couple of years, we aren't missing something new that needs to be discussed. So I, I do appreciate your efforts, and I just don't want us to lose sight that that is always an ongoing issue in St. Paul is our border cities legislation, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Campbell, that's a really great observation, and one thing, you know, when we look at whether that would be the frost footing piece that we lobbied on last year, or the local mutual aid, those were big issues. I think the other benefit of, of a strong partnership between the county and the chamber, and even the city of Moorhead and the chamber, is that we're also able to go to our colleagues in other border cities and build that coalition work. That's something that we have been, that's been somewhat lacking in the past, and so being able for us to, to reach out to our colleagues in those other border cities, whether that be solely the North Dakota border, or when we look at all of the borders of Minnesota, it's a really important part and, and piece of work that we are really dedicated to. So thank you for bringing that part of that up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kaylee, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. I mean, they've been hearing me sing the praises of this trip for a couple weeks now. I am wondering if we wouldn't want to make formal committee assignments for the chamber, for like David and I to attend next year's, you know, day on the Capitol. Maybe that's something we take up at another time, but I just wanted to add that to the discussion.
So I believe one of you is on the chamber, correct? Isn't there a committee that you see?
No.
I mean, I thought there was a discussion committee.
We...
Your microphone's off, sorry.
It's part of the...
EDC, I got you.
EDC is what we view that as. I think certainly the tie-in is there. If we, if we make that assignment a joint one, EDC, chamber, you know, however we want to structure it, there's certainly a huge amount of overlap in that. And I think looking at some of the plans that we're about to see coming from the EDC on co-locating, at least temporarily, there's some discussion there. I mean, there's just things that, the, the areas, although both organizations have different functions, there's a lot of mutuality in, in the approach, so.
Commissioner Campbell?
I would, I would like to see us, certainly we, we're all interested in everything that the chamber does. I, I guess I would, I would prefer that, that we let the chamber determine where it's best for us to, which portions obviously have a public policy area within your chamber. I don't know if you have direct people involved on those public policy committees from different governing entities, and are, are there formal invites to those? I don't know what your process is. I think it's your process, and I, I would be interested to hear, or maybe if, if you're so interested, to invite us to be part of the appropriate areas that you deal with.
Absolutely. I can speak a little bit to that. Would you have a public policy committee? And right now, there are some elected officials that serve on that. I, I think that maybe we should discuss and come back with a formal idea of the best areas that we could maybe partner and have you guys a part of, but we would absolutely welcome you to be part of the discussion for public policy and other areas of the chamber.
I, what I notice about the chamber is you're very well-structured. Commissioner Ebinger noted that, just based on your planning process that you went through, and, and I guess I would like to see it be your structure, and, and if, if you want us to be part of that structure, we'd be more than happy to do it.
Great. So we will come back with some ideas on where we could see some further interaction, whether that be our public policy committee. When Mason speaks shortly, there'll be some talent and workforce components that we will look for. So all in all, I think that's a really good demonstration. One of the things that I also want to note about the public policy piece of this is that we have made considerable increased investments in our Minnesota policy. So Chairwoman, as you, as you spoke about the fact that we're, we're focusing a lot of attention on St. Paul now, really building relationships throughout the state, that was another piece that has been a new addition for us, and so we stand committed to continuing that investment in both a public policy firm that helps us to make sure we keep those relationships, but also our internal staff that's very dedicated to that. So we just so appreciate the partnership that we have with all of you, and so we will come... come back with that piece around, here are some different opportunities where we'd love to see engagement and really based upon the passions of each of you as commissioners, which of those do you feel you could bring both expertise to the table, but also interest and passion?
I appreciate Commissioner Kaylee's point. I think it's really important that you take from this board that we're willing to help in whatever capacity is needed. I think too, going in looking forward to next year, as you continue to ramp up the presence at the Capitol and different days, I think it is important that we have not only one or two commissioners, but all of us involved as well. And so if that becomes one day or two days and different trips and whatever, I, I think that that, that for sure is something that we'd be willing to do. But I think to come back with a recommendation probably allows us to plan that piece out as well.
Great. It also allows us really to leverage relationships and resources. That's what it's really all about. We saw Commissioner Kaylee has different relationships at the Capitol than we do. So how do we identify those with each of the commissioners and look at how do we leverage those to the greatest ability for us? So we'll continue to do so. So we'll shift gears now to talent and workforce and I'll have Mason Radamacher give you a little background on their work there.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you again for the opportunity. Steve, thank you for helping us set this up. Appreciate that. Good to be in front of all of you once again here. Again, Mason Radamacher serves as the Vice President of Workforce and Talent. And here this morning, just to provide a brief overview of what our workforce and talent team has been focused on over the last few months since Shannon and I were in front of you last. We've really boiled down our key focus areas of what the chamber and our workforce and talent team is focused on into three priority areas. And you'll see that outlined on the back of the, of the page that Catherine had provided to everyone. Really focusing on acclamation, development and retention, then diversity, equity and inclusion. One of the footnotes I want to make before I get too far into this is notably missing is the area of talent and workforce recruitment. Reason for that being is we actively support the EDC in their efforts for that. So we're not taking the lead, but more so supporting them in their efforts and being a willing team member in any way, in any capacity that we can. So up to the talent acclamation page, we'll just run through this quick and then I'll give some overviews of what we're doing in each of those key focus areas. And then again, happy to open it up for any questions here. So obviously, under talent acclamation, we're very focused on ensuring that the talent that moves to our community stays within our community. And so we'll be launching here within the next, I would anticipate four to six weeks, four new programs that are really designed to help new people who relocate to our communities, that they feel connected to our communities long-term. And so if we look at the very top initiative on there, the Concierge Plus program is specifically designed for C-suite level individuals and their families. Think of our business executives and their families that are moving to this community, the types of positions that our organizations are spending a lot of time and money recruiting. And they're really focused and really passionate about ensuring that the talent that they bring to this region feels connected to this community. And so it's entirely based on a customized approach and providing them with integrated experiences that are unique to each individual and their family. So we'll have a robust network of concierges is what we'll be calling them across our community that will really be hands-on with these individuals as they move into our region here, all so we can get them deeply connected into our community. The second bullet point that you'll see on there, customized community tours, what we're basically sharing with our organizations and our businesses is you sell your organization, allow us to sell this community. Allow them to sell their organization and we'll sell this community through developing and understanding of what those individuals are looking for in this region and then providing them those customized community tours so they can really get a deep understanding either before they move here or after they move here about what this region all has to offer. I'll give a quick example and use Shannon for that, not to out her, but she lives in West Fargo and has two young kids. And so as Shannon was moving into this region, we would learn all of those types of things. We'd understand that her kids are interested in being active. She likes to golf. So on our tour, we're going to take her around the neighborhood that she's selected to live in, all of the parks and things that are around there, all of the biking trails. She can take her family out on the, the golf courses that are nearby and then provide her with all of those resources as well so that she knows where she can get her kids signed up for those summer activities, the right points of contact, all of those different types of things. So really taking it a step further than we ever have before and providing really those customized approaches to how we're integrating our families into this community. The third area you'll see called Community Champs. Consider your Community Champs essentially the one-stop-shop for getting connected to all things this region has to offer. There are some phenomenal examples of other chambers across the country that have deployed similar programs to what our Community Champs will be. Think of it primarily as an open source network of passionate community members. So each individual that would be a Community Champ essentially would go through a brief application, not an application in terms of how you think of it for a job, but more so tell me why you're passionate about this region. Tell me what you love about this community. What areas would you consider yourself an expert in, in this community? So I'll use myself as an example in terms of what my open source available for anyone profile to view would look like. So it would be a brief bio. This is who I am. I'm a 25 year old male. I live in a core neighborhood in Fargo. Sorry not to out myself living on the other side of the river there as well. And then it went, then it would kind of give that overview, came to school here, NDSU, NDCS, now live in the community, work for the chamber. In addition to that, each of our profiles will have specific areas that those Community Champs would be considered experts in. So again, using myself, I have a golden retriever, so I'm an expert in the best dog parks in this community and the best trails to take her to and walk around. MB Johnson Park, phenomenal by the way. Love taking her up there.
In Morehead.
In Morehead, exactly. And then in addition to that, I'll be fully honest, I, I know the craft brewery scene quite well, so we'll put that on there. All of those types of things are the areas in which we know that as individuals and families are moving to this community, they're looking for experiences and what those new opportunities are for them. So someone that's newly moved here, they can look at my profile, they see all of those areas, they're able to learn a little bit about me, then they can reach out to me, say, hey, I just moved here. Would you want to, would you want to play around a golf? Or the HR professional at the organization that just recruited and brought in that individual could do that outreach as well. So we're really excited to get this one up and off the ground. Like I had said, some good examples across the country. One I'll mention is live in Louisville, Kentucky. They do a phenomenal job with this. They call theirs City Champs. If you are so interested, take a look at that one and you can really see the vision for what this is going to become. The fourth and final area under our talent acclamation focuses are originally what we're calling Get Connected Baskets. These will like, the name of this one will likely change. But this is so much more than just a welcome basket. This is really providing information to individuals and their families as they move here. But more importantly than the information, we'll be providing them with curated experiences based off of what they're passionate about. So for example, a family of four moves to this community and they like baseball, let's put in their opportunities or a voucher for them to get a family of four tickets to the next Red Hawks game, for example. And they can really go out and experience all the things that they're interested in. Or they're passionate about golf and they're really looking to become part of a country club here in town. What we'll do is we'll provide them a voucher for a round of golf at the Meadows, for example, or have someone from MCC reach out to them and offer to take them out for a round of golf. So we're really able to take these acclamation strategies to the next level because what we've learned through various focus groups that we've done to identify what these strategies should be, is that we can provide people with all of the resources in the world, but what really makes someone feel connected to this community are the people that make this region so special. And so that's what all four of these are really focused on is how can we get individuals that move to our community connected to the people that make our community homes. So the second area that I'll talk briefly about here is our development and retention focus. Obviously, for our community to continue to grow, we need to provide opportunities for connection and development for those who already live here. If we're focusing on retaining individuals that move here, we also have to focus on retaining individuals that have been living here their whole lives or that are coming here for college, for example. So a few focus areas there, talent development. We have two programs that I want to specifically call out that the chamber has been operating for a number of years now. The first is our leadership program, really exposing emerging and existing community members and leaders to all things that our community has to offer. The second area is our Young Professionals Network. So our target there is 21 to 39 year olds roughly is what we define as a young professional. So you get done with college, you're taking your first. We can go further in the definition of young professional.
You might have to go too far for me to.
We say that we, we sunset our young professionals at 39 years old, but that doesn't mean we have to.
Oh, yes, one year.
So really focused on providing these individuals in our community, opportunities to meet people they would have otherwise never have met, experienced things they otherwise would have never experienced and, and engage with businesses that they would have otherwise never known existed. Future talent cultivation, I'll get into this a little bit when I just provide a brief update on our Ignite Initiative. But K-12 work-based learning is a huge focus of ours in partnering with our K-12 institutions all across the region here. Really focused on providing additional opportunities for students within our region to participate in those work-based learning experiences such as internships, job shadows, mentorships, inviting businesses into the classroom for guest speaking opportunities. Then on the backend, communicating to our businesses the importance of engaging in what we call to them their future talent pipelines. Those students in high school, middle school are their future workers and businesses need to be doing everything they can right now to be engaging with those folks. Now focused on the same, same level of focus, but just on a different target population, and that would be our post-secondary students. Equipping employers through internship toolkits, all of the resources that they need that will work alongside employers and aid employers in the development of robust and strong internship programs. Obviously, internships are a great trial basis for organizations to bring talent into their organization. Think of it as low risk, high reward essentially. And what we're hearing from our post-secondary institutions is that their students are craving more opportunities than what's out there right now. And so we're working closely with businesses all across the region to develop different trainings and digestible toolkits so they feel equipped and have all of the information that they need to properly develop those opportunities. The last area in our development and retention bucket is focused on industry advisory collaboratives. Multiple of these specifically focused on the different industries across our region, really focused on pulling them all together, using the convening power that the chamber has to streamline conversations, connections and synergies amongst organizations that exist within the same industries as well as our education partners too. The third focus area of ours, I know we're a little bit over here, so I'll breeze through this quick. Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. This is one of those areas that is at the top of every millennial and Gen Z-er's mind right now, specifically as they're making their decisions on where they want to work. They're looking at what their companies are doing and what those organizations and their communities are doing in the area of diversity, equity and inclusion. And we see it as our place to provide those opportunities for education and provide those resources to our business community so that they feel that they, they feel comfortable and equipped to go down the path of, of making some changes within their organization. So three quick pieces that I'll highlight on there are Professionals of Color Program. This has been one that's been up and running for a number of years now, but really, really focused on providing opportunities or to create inclusive opportunities for professionals of color to develop personally and professionally through meaningful engagement and a sense of belonging within our area. So four key cornerstones of that one, networking, professional development, education, and then service. The second one that you'll see on there, Quarterly Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Trainings. This is something we've had up for two quarters now and we'll be looking to further strengthen as we move into the future months here and future trainings, but really providing employers with practical and actionable strategies they can engage in and implement within their organizations. Then the third and final area on there will be an upcoming Regional DE&amp;I Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Collaborative, really focused on developing additional resources to best support employers in their efforts and really understand what their needs and their struggles are and customize those resources for them. The final area that I want to talk about just really briefly and provide an update is on Ignite. Shannon and I were in front of you guys seven, eight, nine months ago already. It's crazy how fast time flies. But we've been running full speed ahead with this initiative as well and just wanted to provide a brief update. Since we've launched in October of 21, late October of 21, we've had over 8,500 jobs posted onto the site, more than 65 local videos highlighting our employers and employees have been shot within our community and living on Ignite. More than 300 businesses have created their profiles and are engaging in those skill-based volunteerism opportunities. They're posting their jobs on there and we're continuing to see a massive influx of, of organizations interested in, in learning more about Ignite, how they can get more intentionally involved. And then we've seen hundreds of active job seekers on there, hundreds of students as well, using this for career exploration as well within their classrooms. And then the final bullet point that I'll mention here is we officially rolled out our volunteers for education. This is that business professional page. So not only can businesses have their profiles, but now business professionals can have their profiles as well. So we'll pick on Steve. Steve, for example, can go on to Ignite. He can build his professional profile and he can say who he is, what he does, then he can participate in those skill-based volunteerism opportunities as well. So he can seamlessly get in front of all of those students at Morehead High School and talk to them about what he does every day. So.
I might, I might just add to that point because we're picking on Steve. So, so Steve could, in, in that profile, the, the interesting piece about that is that those keywords become searchable for all of the educators. So all teachers, all career counselors, nonprofit leaders that have active job seekers, but also K-12, K-16. So if I was looking for a project manager, I could go type in project management and any business professional with that experience would come up. And through the messaging system, I could immediately as a teacher say, would you be willing to come speak in my classroom? So it is really a dynamic tool and we're seeing tremendous amounts of partnership at the K-12 level especially here at the Morehead School District. Every one of their freshmen will use this tool for career exploration now. So it's pretty impressive just to see what has happened in those few months that we've been there. So.
So with that, opening up for any questions or turning back over to Shannon to talk briefly about Fueling Our Future, quick update there, then wrap it up.
So I'll just finish and then we can take any questions that you still may have. This, the talent work along with the public policy work, one thing that you should all know is that yes, we still have significant numbers of members in the Chamber of Commerce, but we are not exclusive only to our members. So the work that we are doing has impact to our community whether they are members or not. So this is a very different philosophical shift as to where we are headed. We also are really dependent on those public-private partnerships. So Fueling Our Future, you have that investor report in front of you. We are ending the four-year initiative around Fueling Our Future, but we are looking at Fueling Our Future 2.0. The Governance Committee of Fueling Our Future has asked us to develop a new strategy plan. We're actually looking at things like should public policy be in part of Fueling Our Future? Should our talent work be within there? And then also, how do we kind of push a reset button that Fueling Our Future is a thought leader group that's looking at the, the top key issues facing our community and how do we invest resources into those versus being a granting organization, which it kind of has evolved into. We also know that it'll be very important going forward that we have new partners. So this is not a formal ask of you, but rather to put it on your radar that we know that the importance of the county's involvement in this work as a region has direct impacts around revenue as well as prosperity and growth for this region and for your county here at Clay County. So we look forward to continuing to look at what that partnership will look like in the future. So I won't go into Fueling Our Future. I'll let the document or the report speak for itself. We'll take any questions if you have any addition, but more than anything, thank you so much for the time and thank you for the partnership.
Thank you so much, Shannon, for that. Board questions? I do, I know there's a transition in life happening on your, with Mason. I think it's okay to say that. I saw a video that maybe you'll be a lawyer or counsel for some government unit at some point. So congratulations on that as you move on. But certainly thank you for all the work that you're continuing to do on our behalf and every agency that you come in contact with. I know you advocate fiercely for their needs.
I have a comment on recruitment. Before I get to that, I want to go back because I don't want to forget about Commissioner Mojo's idea here. And that is I would move that we endorse a letter that deals with all of your bullet points on here in terms of, of legislation for the year 2022.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to draft a letter on our letterhead with your priorities. Certainly you can work with Steve on the contacts that we've created on that. So we have a motion by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Ebinger. And obviously, time is of the essence. So the sooner we can do this, I think the better on, on that. Questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries.
And one last thing, in terms of recruitment and, and in all, we do have some local fun with competition for where we have our, our local people want to come to live and, and I have to speak on behalf of us. And so having said that and. speak on behalf of us. And so having said that, and in line with our colleagues, Mayor Dartis and Mayor Mahoney, no offense, but if you really would like to move up, Morehead has a lot of things to offer. Just as you said, Shannon, we have two really nice golf courses here. We have a nice golf course in Holly, and we have a nice golf course around the Barnesville area. And Mason, we also have, like you said, the good parks and schools, and we have a career academy here for, if you're thinking of
I'd have known about it.
Standing a family. And then I can't go without maybe also pointing fingers, two doors to my left here as a hint for that individual, too. That Morehead also has, Clay County also has really good residential areas to choose to live, so.
Wow. It's rough here today.
That's perfect, so.
So.
And I think as it's been raining like crazy, I will also say that Clay County is higher elevation. I think that's a great place to stay safe from floodwaters. So I think, all joking aside, any other?
So on that note, we will continue to be staunch advocates for the entire region. So we appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Very good reports today.
Yes. Thank you so much, guys. Be in contact. We are behind, so I apologize for that. Number three this morning is a proclamation on the Fire and Emergency Medical Services Appreciation Day. Several years ago, the Joint Powers Group decided that it would be important to have days of appreciation for our police and Sheriff's Department, but also Fire and Emergency Services. We do have a proclamation before us. I will go ahead and read that, but after that, if somebody wants to highlight the event that's next week, we can do that. So the proclamation of the Clay County Intergovernmental Committee, whereas on May 18, 2022, Clay County citizens will unite in support of firefighters and emergency medical personnel nationwide to promote National Emergency Medical Services Week. And whereas, citizens are urged to support firefighters and emergency medical technicians in a myriad of ways across Clay County, from sending a card of support to their local fire department or EMS agency, sharing a positive story on social media about emergency personnel, to thanking emergency personnel they come in contact with. And whereas, emergency personnel play an integral part in Clay County by protecting and serving the community, and they deserve our support. And whereas, the Clay County Intergovernmental Committee, which includes the Morehead Area Public Schools, Dilworth, Glendon, Felton Public Schools, City of Morehead, City of Dilworth, and Clay County, is recognizing those in emergency services and the public service that they provide to our communities. Now therefore, the Clay County Intergovernmental Committee do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 18, 2022, as Fire and Emergency Medical Services Appreciation Day. Further, let it be resolved that May 16, 2022 through May 20, 2022, be proclaimed National Emergency Medical Services Week, and all citizens of Clay County are encouraged to wear red on May 18, 2022 in support of fire and emergency medical personnel. In witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands and jointly signed as the representative of each agency of the Clay County Intergovernmental Committee this 18th or 10th day of May 2022.
Madam Chair, on behalf of Clay County, I move that we approve the proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion of approval from Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Kaylee, and a third, I think Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Steve, will you briefly say when the press conference?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the proclamation that you just signed, our Intergovernmental Committee is going to be having a press conference recognizing our fire and EMT workers on the 18th at the Dilworth Community Center at 1:00 p.m.
Okay. And if you would, please advertise that.
It has been advertised, Madam Chair.
Great. Any other discussion? Thank you to the work of that committee. I know Commissioner Kaylee and I think Campbell serve on that. Moving forward, we do have, we're a little late for it, but a public hearing, a petition for rezoning in Section 22 of Elkton Township. We have Matt Jacobson, our planning director, here, looking for a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open public hearing?
We have a motion by Commissioner Kaylee to open the public hearing, a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're opened.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Yes, so this is a petition for rezoning a parcel just east of the townsite of Downer, and so the request is to rezone approximately 16-acre parcel with the goal of eventually maybe doing some commercial storage or something similar to that in the future, right along County 10 there. The current zoning of the parcel is Agricultural General. It does have a Resource Protection Aggregate overlay, and a portion of the west end of the parcel is Agricultural Service Center, and the proposed zoning is to remove that Resource Protection Aggregate overlay. And this was heard last month by the Planning Commission, and they passed a motion to recommend this, and that was unanimous. So here's roughly where we're looking at, Downer. This is the parcel. This is the current zoning, so you can see it's got that aggregate overlay. Most of actually Downer and the surrounding area is this aggregate, Resource Protection Aggregate overlay, and then there's a little bit of Agricultural Service Center here on the west end of that parcel. And so, as, this came up in a previous hearing in January, I believe, we talked a little bit about the Resource Protection Overlay districts. There's three of them in Clay County, and their purpose is basically to protect a specific resource, whether it be groundwater, significant biological resources, or in this case, significant aggregate resources. And so with this zoning district, essentially, it was based on some of the work that was done with the DNR. They did a kind of an aggregate resources inventory and mapping project. And so you can kind of see here, this area, these orange areas and blue areas are where a lot of our areas in the county that are really high in aggregate potential. So about 7% of the county have a high or moderate aggregate potential, and so this Resource Protection Aggregate Overlay district is intended to protect these aggregate resources from development. And, you know, you see in, like outside of St. Cloud or in the cities where they've built residential subdivisions over their aggregate resources, and now they're running out of aggregate, and it's very expensive to, the further out you have to go to source that aggregate. And so this pulled up, there's a couple of historic aerial images. This is from, I believe, the '30s. You can see right here is kind of where that parcel is. There's been some gravel extraction that happened, and I believe this is in the, gosh, I want to say this is the 1948, where you can kind of see that there has been a lot of gravel activity that's happened in this area and in this, on this parcel as well. And so this is that former, what's now that Valley Metal and Iron, got Downer, and then this is that parcel, and that's kind of where the road, County 10 curves right here. So you can kind of see it, too, even more so here. So this is from the '80s. Essentially, this used to all be, this is, this area, this kind of vein of sand and gravel has already been depleted. It's already been extracted. And so, and that showed up on the, when the DNR did their resource and mapping inventory, they actually did identify this as a former gravel pit. Now, say it was, say it was, you know, even if it wasn't an active, or there was still gravel, sand and gravel potential on this parcel. These are our current setbacks in our development code. So essentially, the area where you could potentially mine would be up in here. So not a very, there's a lot of setbacks that you would have to probably apply for variances to if there even was a significant gravel potential on this property. So some considerations, if you're to remove this Resource Protection Aggregate overlay, you're not going to lose access to aggregate resources. The resources have already been utilized on this parcel and its surrounding parcels because they are all old gravel pits. The setbacks for mining already limit the amount of mineable area on this property, even if there were resources. And this is something that I just brought up to the Planning Commission, not necessarily something that you all have to make a decision on today, but just something to think about is, is the county might, we might want to consider looking at the Resource Protection Aggregate overlay, not just on this parcel, but other parcels. There are some areas where it just doesn't make sense to have this. Turtle Lake, for example, like if you look at Turtle Lake, that's all zoned Resource Protection overlay. And
Resource or aggr-
Agg. Agg, yep. Resource Protection Aggregate overlay, yep. So, so it's something to maybe think about in the future moving forward as we could maybe do kind of more of a countywide look at this, specifically this zoning overlay district, and especially in areas where it's in and around like towns like Downer and things like that. So. The Planning Commission did go through these, the criteria and general review standards for rezoning, and they made, I guess, positive affirmations for all the findings. They didn't find any, any issues with, with removing this aggregate overlay zoning district, and hence their unanimous recommendation to approve. Any questions for me at all? I will say, Madam Chair, that the applicant is here, so.
Dusty, would you like to come up? Dusty, would you like to come up and have any questions? Sorry.
I guess what I said last time, too, is that this chunk of land has always been kind of a, when I bought it, we were going to use it for this, and then I missed out, like got busy on the, I think developed five, they rezoned it.
Yep.
Let it go. And there really isn't any other use, not that that's your concern, for the land with the junkyard crossed. I mean, there's nothing. Valley iron and metal, he put it very nicely. It's a mess. So maybe this kind of fits into what we can, you know, what my plan was originally.
Use it for, yep. Any other?
I paid attention when they rezoned it.
Any questions for the applicant? Anything else? Any questions for Matt?
Move to close hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing from Commissioner Campbell, a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Actually, I didn't ask if any members of the public wanted to speak. I'm sorry. If we can hold off on that. Are there any members of the public wishing to address on this hearing? Any members of the public? Steve or Matt, any public correspondence? I don't see any in our packet.
No, Madam Chair.
No, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Back to that, we do have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Granted. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would, I would, I would move that we remove the aggregate overlay district on the proposed particular parcel.
Second. There is a motion to approve the petition for rezoning, a removal of the aggregate overlay by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would also like to make another motion, and that would be that we move to recommend that the Planning Commission review all aggregate overlay districts in Clay County for, you know, using the same criteria. If they have been fully mined, there's, there's really no reason to have that, that protection area on it if it's been fully mined. It still would require them to go through conditional use processes and stuff. So I would, I would move that we, we ask the Planning Commission to review that.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell that requests a review of the aggregate overlay protection districts. That would go to the Planning Commission, working with planning staff. Second. Second by Commissioner Kaylee. I appreciate that point of view to review those. I think that's important as we go forward, particularly because I think we're in the process of identifying old pits, maybe rehabilitation pieces. We've talked about that recently. I don't think it would hurt at some point to have a schedule of review for all of our overlays. I know it's probably been six years ago now that we had a little bit of an issue with one of the cities in Clay County and an overlay, and as we see growth, it's important to respond to those areas and prioritize what, what needs to be prioritized, and then maybe earmark things that we can work towards fixing. So I really do appreciate this as a first step. Commissioner Kaylee?
Just as a point of discussion, there was no timeline put on that. This sounds like a really big project, so.
Yeah, I guess, I guess from my standpoint, the motion would be to request, you know, it's easy to volunteer other people to do things, but
Yeah.
You know, I think, I think we got to depend on Matt and the Planning Commission to put that on their agenda as they see fit. I just think it's, the message from us is that it should be reviewed, and they're the appropriate entity to do that.
I think that it's appropriate, probably as, as the Planning Commission has different schedules, usually sometimes of the year are busier than others, but certainly in the next six months, we'll have a pretty good idea of, of what we need to maybe address and go forward. Is that fair?
Yes, absolutely, Madam Chair. And I will just say, too, that we've already kind of started this process a little bit of identifying old pits, identifying areas that have this Resource Protection Overlay district where it's already maybe, there's been residential development already where it doesn't make sense to have, have this Resource Protection Overlay district. So some of that work has already been, been done. And a big thanks to Erica in our office for, for doing a lot of that, too, so.
Well, it doesn't surprise me that you and your staff have already been on top of this, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, a direction to review those overlays. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dusty, for being a, a business in Clay County. We certainly appreciate that as well. Item five this morning are Highway Department items. We do have a bid opening. We have four different items. The first would be the bid opening for the mill and overlay Okay, so we're opening bids this morning for CASA 12. It's a mill and overlay project from the Red River to 11, which is about 6.8 miles.
Yep.
Your engineer estimate is $2,122,017.70.
Yes, so we did receive five bidders. They were all electronic. There was one addendum on the project, and all five bidders did acknowledge the addendum, as well as all five bidders do have a bid bond and the amount of 5%.
Okay.
The first bidder is Markson and Gravel Company. Their bid is $2,643,314.93. The second bid is Border States Paving Incorporated. Their bid is $2,569,102.24. Their bid is $2,569,102.24. The third bid is Central Specialties Incorporated. The fourth bidder is Knife River. And the final bid is RJ Zaverland Sons Incorporated.
Okay. Do you, do you want to have time to review these before we accept or would you like to move forward?
I would like to move forward. I did talk to a bunch of different contractors. RJ Zaverland Sons was one that I did speak to. They were wondering about starting yet in the month of May. I think with as much traffic as this road sees, I think that would be a huge benefit to get that road done before 52 goes.
That's a great point.
What kind of a percentage over is that? Is that like a-
Five percent, yep. In our five-year plan, we are showing a balance of 1.6 million at the end of the year with a 2.1 million dollar estimate, so we're still fine on our state aid balance.
Madam Chair, I'd move a little bit of RJ Zaverland Sons.
We have a motion to approve the low bid by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Gross. I agree. I think if you can get this done sooner, I think it certainly makes sense. I know that you're well aware of the commodity transportation routes that will need to happen towards the end of the summer, so I think if we can hit these early, that would be helpful. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
If I could, I know this, you know, this is really quick, you just got these, but I, if I could include in my motion that, that subject to any-
Errors in the bid.
Errors in the bid that they might find, I could include that.
That would reflect your motion, Commissioner Gross. And that is approved on the second as well. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted.
Thank you.
Item B this morning is a request for approval of the MnDOT master partnership contract and resolution 2022-18.
Yes, so the master partnership contract with MnDOT is something we utilize a lot during the construction season. They do a lot of our secondary testing of all our materials. When a concrete box culvert is being built, they actually inspect it at the plant as well as all of our equipment calibration, traffic counting, traffic signal maintenance. The agreement is utilized by all 87 counties and it's something that we utilize quite often.
The only thing I'd note as we approve these, just to update the point of contact on all of these requests, Steve? Board wishes.
Is there a cost to this thing or?
Well, there is a, there is a cost, like whenever we do material inspections, but we budget for that every year. It comes out of our, I believe it's in your packet, comes out of our engineering consultant technical service, when we use them for material testing, but something that we know is coming every year and we do budget for it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the MnDOT master partnership contract and resolution 2022-18.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Item C this morning is a request for approval of MnDOT grant agreement for SAP 14-598-073. It's resolution and resolution 2022-19.
Yep, so we're requesting approval of the MnDOT grant agreement number 1048662 and supporting resolution that you mentioned. We did receive bridge bonding for a bridge replacement on County Road 68 that we opened a few weeks ago. And as required to use bridge bond funds, a grant agreement and supporting resolution must be approved by the county board. The grant is $163,100.00 and then local funding on the project is $7,228.
Madam Chair, I'd move resolution 2022-19.
Motion to approve resolution 2022-19. Commissioner Campbell made that. And a second from Commissioner Gross. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you. Item D this morning is a request for approval of MnDOT grant agreement for SAP 14-598-074 and resolution 2022-20.
Yes, so this is the approval of the MnDOT grant agreement number 1048664 and supporting resolution that you mentioned. This particular bridge is on County Road 69. The grant agreement does look a little different than the first one, but that's just because the first one is general bond funds, the second one is motor vehicle lease sales tax funding, so their grant agreements are a little bit different from MnDOT. It's essentially the same thing. We received $189,464 in grant funds with $8,680 in local funds for the project.
Okay, board questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the agreement and resolution 2022-20.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Ebbinghaus. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Granted. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell.
Before, before we move on here, I'm, I was at the Buffalo Red Watershed District meeting last night and in light of the resignation today and, you know, your appointment, Steve, I'm wondering if we should reach out to both of the watersheds informing, because there's always a lot of ongoing work that's being done-
Absolutely.
-collaboration between the county and the watershed. And maybe just a follow-up that we, we have changed engineers for now and then maybe if you could also just call them and, or reach out to them, let them know that you're available for, there's a lot of high water going on in the county right now and a lot of issues that are out there. And I think it's important that they have some direct contact availability with you, so.
Yep.
Okay?
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I agree, that probably goes beyond just two watersheds, but I think those are definitely important because of the ditch pieces, but certainly within the networks, we should update.
Yeah, we've had some discussions on that and we're working on a list to get that information out. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are scheduled for a five-minute break. We will come back at nine, uh, 9:53. Thank you. Call the meeting back to order. Thank you for your patience. Item seven this morning is a request to move forward with ARPA project for the HVAC pneumatics air compressor replacement. Joe, good morning.
Morning, Madam Chair, board members. Yes, this is a part of the facilities ARPA plan, this project. It's a big air compressor that's over in the power plant. It's, want to be clear, it's very, it's connected to HVAC. It's what controls everything in the family service center and power plant when it comes out, the thermostats and valves and everything, so. I've got two, two quotes here, so I am asking to move forward with the low quote using Dakota Plains Mechanical. The total project cost is $14,750 and we had an original ARPA budget of 20 grand.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Move approval.
A motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the request.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Ebbinghaus. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Item eight this morning on our agenda is a consider approval of the increased costs of geofome and an increase to the guaranteed maximum price for the resource recovery project. We have Stephen Larson's here. I don't know if construction engineers, if you want to come up. Kirk's here as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, we have a change request. It looks a little bit different than what we've wrote, we normally have. We have usually a little bit of more of a formal process when it comes to the change. We had a conversation with Mr. Mattson on Thursday morning prior to the agenda going out and he shared the, the issue with our geiform product that we're utilizing at a resource recovery facility. It's a, it's a product that's utilized in the floor. Since the bidding process has started, we've seen about an increase of a 45% in the cost of that product. And, and so part of what we've addressed through this, through this process is we've certainly seen bid escalations or escalation of prices overall, and so this has been a challenge. In talking with Mr. Mattson, in order to move forward with the project, a decision needed to be made on this. Neither myself nor our Commissioner Campbell or Commissioner Mojo, by the board's actions, had the ability to make that decision, and so we brought it forward here this morning. And so Ben and Tom here can probably provide a more detailed explanation of the product for any questions for the board.
Okay. Ben?
Yeah, so, Commissioner, thanks for having us here today. Basically, what we're looking at on the geofome itself, the way the building is designed, we have a big driveline that goes underneath the building and then we have a large portion of the building that the elevation of the site had to be raised up about six feet. Rather than surcharge the ground with six feet of fill, four feet of it, they basically used huge styrofoam blocks to lessen the load on the soils. Otherwise, you'll have what's called differential settlement where this portion of the building settles more than this portion. As you kind of know, with the COVID costs have gone crazy on everything right now, especially when it comes to things like insulation and anything with really petrochemical type products. So where we were at last year, we had the product quoted, we had everything assumed to be coming to us for a price of roughly $102, $102.60. Since that time, the price has increased to $149.26 a cubic yard. A year ago, we did not feel it was right to order the product and get it sitting on site because basically outside storage of it is not good. It basically says it's, has to be covered with opaque material, exposure to UV basically is detrimental to it, so. And windy conditions, you have to ballast it, do a bunch of stuff with that, so. Unfortunately, you take a multiplier of basically $45 across 2,700 cubic yards and you end up with $137,000, which obviously is not anything any of us want to be dealing with, but it's where we're at today, so.
Okay. Board? Questions?
Hindsight being 2020, as we always say, had, had, had we known that it would be this much, I wonder if, if ordering it earlier and even, and even finding, even if you had to pay rent to have this wouldn't have been a cheaper option than this. I guess no one can anticipate and, and again, in addition to, from a timing standpoint, you know, when you needed it and when you could use it, the weather has been a major factor in that, in this entire project in terms of overrun costs as well, so. Had we, had we known, known that it was going to be this long and had we known that, that there was going to be this significant of an increase, it would have been, I think, far more reasonable for us to even find a cold storage site where it could have been indoors anyway than, than to pay $137,000. I just wanted to vent.
Well, certainly, I, one, I appreciate the work that you guys have done in the facility. I think that we have had challenges and we have understood the, the weather that is just, I can't even say unprecedented anymore because it's just insane and the cost that we've had to incur because of that. I hope you know that we've understood that there's just certain things we can't get around. With that said, I don't support this and I, I really, really struggle because there's other larger, one, we had a guaranteed maximum price and all of us have known of the large increases that everything is, is seen. And so to know that we're all seeing unprecedented increases and still only order this a week ago, I, I just really struggle with that. I mean, even a month ago, we know that the prices would have been less and we had acres of storage and I understand the argument on exposure to the elements, but there's another substantial project going on a mile away from that that ordered geofome early at the sacrifice of parking space and that had to sit out all year. And so while I understand we have increases that we've supported you on and understand that, I just can't wrap my head around why, why have, you know, CMAR by nature of its wordage is at risk and I think we're all at risk, but I just, my venting maybe went a step farther, but I just, I cannot grapple with this.
Madam Chair, if I could, so we were, and you are right, we knew last fall that there was, we'd receive a quote and I think we shared with everyone in our meetings the last fall, we knew just to cover it, to deal with that portion, secure it, try and keep it from blowing all over the county, our contractor wanted $42,000 to do that last fall. So we, we did take a risk in not ordering at that point. And really, the reason for not doing anything till now is that they basically, Tom, you can describe it probably better than I as far as how the ordering process goes and how they are willing to release it or not release it until we're ready to receive.
Yeah, so I just researched a little bit, the petrochemicals, so there's been a lot of, I'm not sure, obviously you're talking about the high school project, I'm not sure when they procured their materials, but specifically on or around the time that we were interested in even considering bringing it to site, the, the issue at hand then was Hurricane Ida, that was the report from our subcontractor. And Ben mentioned just the, the cost of storage, where, the speculation, where is that going to occur? We weren't even certain that we could get it and we haven't been certain that we could get it until just, just recently now. And so over the winter months, we did do some investigation, you know, can we buy this out? Is there another option? You know, can we check with, you know, direct suppliers? And so we did some of that in February and, and that's when it, it was very apparent that there was going to be a likely issue here, but until we were within two weeks of the allotment of raw material going to the manufacturer for this project, actual lead time and availability, sorry, actual lead time and price could not be defined. So that, that was a consistent from all the way since we started even talking about getting in on our project, so.
Commissioner Kaylee?
So you just said that you were investigating, you know, what happens if we can't even order this? What were, what was the contingency plan if you don't have geofome? And is that an option instead of ordering this at this point?
From a design standpoint, I think there would have to, I mean, it would, it would take significant design considerations. How do we work around that? The geofome itself, I think, is a bit of value engineering. Some of the structures, some of the buildings right here on this campus are founded on like geo peers. This was the cheapest option at the time. Those options are more expensive and the alternative, I think, right now, those, those options aren't, aren't on the table. The alternative would be accepting some amount of differential settlement, which is not a good solution either, I think.
Sacrificing quality, I guess I would.
And Madam Chair, Commissioners, I did have a conversation with, with Matt Evans from Burns and McDonald and he, he shared the same, same reasoning in, in the event that we went to a, to a different base, it would potentially have a further impact in the future if that settling happened on the transfer floor.
Commissioner Campbell?
Can we, can we talk a little bit for the board? I know we've, we got a little internal information being on- I know we've got a little internal information, being on, Commissioner Mojo and I being on the committee, but can we have some direction of where we are at right now with both the owner and contractor contingency amounts?
Quick answer is, basically, contractor contingency, we have, in good faith with all the winter conditions we've been dealing with, we've been applying all of the costs we've incurred for blizzards after blizzards, after rain event after rain event, and unforeseen de-watering on the site, we've been charging those against contractor contingency. If I were to follow the letter of the law by this contract we have, I'm able to notify you as the owner that those are acts of God, they're extreme weather events. We could split hairs and probably say those should be going against an owner contingency. We've been wanting to keep things moving, but unfortunately, those costs keep piling up, right? So with that being said, we've basically seen the entire contractor contingency spent at this point on winter conditions. The owner contingency, Steve has the full report here, but I think we're down to about $120,000 or something.
He might have went to get the.
I think he went to grab it.
Yeah, yeah, we can get you specifics or we can speculate, but there is a couple of smaller design changes yet that the design team is working on as far as owner contingency, some electrical items that have been requested. But definitely, where we're at in the job, we're very low on contingencies.
So, based on where you're at, within the percentage of completion, and the, taking a look at the total GMP, you know, I think we have no choice but to continue on with the GeoForm is what we have to do. I think, you know, I certainly don't want to cut short the integrity of the proposed plan by any means, that's not, that should not be an option. What it boils down to is who and where are the responsibilities on this? And Ben, I take into consideration, based on the legal document and whether there's acts of God that are within there, I don't know that we need to, at this point, start splitting those hairs yet. You know, I still think, in terms of ordering the GeoForm right now, I guess where I'm going with this is, I don't know if we would really, at this point, have to do the amendment to the GMP. I think we, you know, I think there's still, you know, you can still, we can still pay for it and everything out of what's there. I think we do need to have a longer look or a better look at all of the areas that depleted our contingencies. You know, and so, I don't, I don't, so if we weren't to do this today, but within mind that we can have future conversations, there are still the dollars available without, right? Am I wrong? And those could still be paid for, but at some point in time, I understand that there may be the need to discuss who's going to.
I think.
Responsible.
It's twofold, but I think the quote is more than what any contingency is left, correct?
Correct. If you were to take it out of any one single pot, we, at this point, show $96,000 remaining in contractor contingency, which we know we're working on some prices behind the scenes here on the remaining winter costs, we've spent all that. There is $121,000 remaining in owner contingency, so I agree, I mean, we have a longstanding relationship here. We would be doing anything at risk, which, I mean, that's inherent to what we do, we have to, we have to keep things moving, or we end up.
My point is, you know, we are partners in this, and we've been partners in other projects, and they've all worked out, and I just think that, moving forward, whether you, I don't care what line item we take this out of for right now to pay for it, the fact of the matter is, is if we're going to have to make an adjustment to the GMP, let's take a serious look at all the things that we've gone through and also what we still can anticipate. We have a responsibility as a county still to make sure that we have the funds available to pay for this project, and that's incumbent on us to make sure that we can stay within, and we can't go do a second bond on this project. Fortunately, we have, you know, we do have some, the MPCA is with us on some language and potential maybe additional funding coming through, but that's maybe a long shot at best. But if there's concerns amongst this board right now in terms of supporting this request, I think there is still the ability, within what we're doing, to order this foam, to move forward, and, you know, we can pay those bills. If you have some, you know, from your standpoint, if you take it out of owner contingency now or contractor contingency, let's do that without adjusting the GMP right now, and we can come back.
So my question is, how do we do that clearly? You know, I certainly do appreciate, as I said earlier, we've been partners in different ventures, and we all want to see this moving and get done, but I also agree, I think there are areas where, as Commissioner Campbell said, maybe it makes more sense to put some of these contingencies in a different bucket. My question is, if the board approves the purchasing that would bump up the GMP, which would have to happen to purchase it, how, it seems a little cart before the horse type thing, how do we do that clearly?
Well, I mean, I think in doing what is being suggested ultimately, the board is to better serve kicking the can down the road, and that, but it does allow, what Commissioner Campbell to say is, I wanted to bring this forward, one, just for the fact that we knew from a project standpoint, any delays, any delay in ordering will delay the project. And so, I think to Commissioner Campbell's point of sitting down, and it's not just with this project, there's some additional thing Kirk needs, and so I think that it would be a very good plan to sit down and make that plan out with the understanding from this board that there are additional monies that are going to be needed. And so, if the idea and intent today is to do this, I think from construction engineers, again, based on the working relationship of saying, we're going to get together, and we'll make sure that, because we know these other items are already there, that we would be working with them.
And here's why I think it's important that we sit down and have this discussion for the rest of the board that's not having these weekly meetings. The winter concrete protection for January was $212,000. The winter de-watering for January was $36,000. The concrete protection for February was $201,000, and then the de-watering was $11,000. We're still, if you recall, March was terrible, and we're still waiting for the March concrete protection and de-watering, and unfortunately, it has not quit raining, so we will have substantial de-watering costs for April. The reality is, we're all going to have to pay significantly more than we additionally bargained for, and I get that, I've said, I understand that. And so, at some point, yes, this board, should they, you know, vote on this one GeoForm piece, we will have to have important conversations about who's paying for the weather. It will have to shuffle around somehow, and I think that's right, I think we should have those conversations, we have to have those conversations, that's the nature of the beast, so to speak.
Yeah, I agree with that, and my whole point on what I'm suggesting here is, this GeoForm should not wait any longer to be ordered. That's first and foremost, it should just be ordered. And what I'm saying is, just take it out of your GMP dollars right now. And when it comes to the other things that, this, the ordering of the GMP, whether it was six months ago or today, isn't an act of God issue, right? But some of these other things that Commissioner Muller just brought up are. And so, let's, you know, let's have the time to have that discussion about, right now, what you have put into your contractor contingency, and what we could, as partners in this project, that have already been considered in the contractor contingency, could be moved out, that would make room for the GeoForm to go in there. But right now, you have dollars within your GMP.
Correct.
Because you haven't been paid your full GMP money, right?
Correct.
So, that's what I'm suggesting for now, so we move forward, and then we can have a better dialogue in terms of the act of God clauses that are there, and we need to be fair with each other on this project and what it's done. And I, for one, am going to be open to having that dialogue in consideration for adjustments for those reasons. It's only in fairness that that should happen.
Commissioner Ebbinger, did you have a point?
Just a question, a vote by the commission today would increase the GMP. It would allow the ordering, but our vote would not determine who's liable or who's going to pick up for this in their contingency fund, would it? Or would that encumber the county to take it out of the owner's contingency?
Yeah, I think if we, if the board voted to increase the GMP, it would fall to the county, that would be the intent of that increase, so.
And a failure to vote for this, would that stop our ability to order the GeoForm?
No.
No?
I think there's two, maybe two situations. I think the one is, you're looking for board approval of the purchase of the GeoForm, okay? The second piece, which I think we still are a little maybe divided on how, if it's a vote to just order it through contingencies or order it to increase the GMP? And there's, as Commissioner Campbell, I believe, said, is to order it, and that would come out of a contingency, and then we need to have those discussions. If it exhausts all the contingencies, that would trigger an increase to the GMP. We would like to have conversations in the next couple of weeks about exactly what costs should be contingencies or what costs we should shift to be in that GMP bucket. Is that correct?
I think what you're saying is exactly right. I would say, if we want to have a comprehensive discussion, then maybe, like Steve said, look at full project costs, anticipate some other things that may be coming up, design or just the final cost for this weather and de-watering, some of that stuff, maybe we just push it down the road a little bit and come back with one request as team.
I guess what my proposal is, is actually a third option, and the third option is you, you know, authorizing the ordering of it, and it's up to you to, right now, where you would take that out of right now within the GMP. That's where I'm suggesting right now, just so that we get it done. But having said that, from our standpoint, dealing with the good faith of the contract, being able to fully look at all of the issues that have transpired, that have had these increased costs, and modify contingencies after we better review it.
Yep.
Does that make sense to you, Ben?
I think, yeah, I think, I'm saying the same thing.
Okay.
We will order it.
Let's do it in two separate motions then, I think, just because it's, let's be clear with the financial commitment. So the first would be a request to order the GeoForm with the request.
I would move that.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Colleen, can you roll call this, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebbinger?
Aye.
Thank you, that does pass, so let's get that ordered and on site. The next piece would be in regards to the GMP or the financing aspect.
Madam Chair, I would move that the board recommend to the construction committee that a complete review of contingencies, both of contractor and owner's contingencies, be reviewed for property termination and category.
There's a motion.
Second.
By Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Ebbinger, is that clear? All parties, Colleen, is that?
Clear?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Granted, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Just briefly, while we have Kirk here, going through these same issues, I know we have an issue with some new equipment we need to get. Kirk, is one of them a dozer?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, yes, that's exactly right, we need to get some new equipment out there, we need to get two semi-tractors, and we also need to get a front-end loader as well.
Madam Chair, I would like to request that we have brought before us next week issues on that in terms of what is necessary to order, and ordering it immediately is possible. I just want to give an example, in my report last time with Prairie Lakes, there was a dozer that was needed, and had we, we had a 30-day time period where they were holding a price, otherwise, there was going to be a 10% increase on that, and the lead time was as much as 10 to 12 months. So I think we need to have action next week on making those orders to avoid some of these other increases we've just discussed.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that's exactly right, we've been looking for a new tractor or trailer for quite a while, and it's about a year and a half out for a new tractor, for a new semi-tractor, so, right now, we're looking at good, used equipment.
Okay. All right, we'll see you for that next week, thank you. Item nine this morning is a support, the recommendation for health plans for individuals eligible for medical assistance or men care on special needs programs. Our social service director, Rhonda Porter, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. That's a mouthful to say. Okay, so I am here this morning in follow-up to a presentation I gave in February regarding the procurement process with the State Department of Human Services for our health plans that serve individuals on public health programs, so medical assistance and Minnesota Care, and then some special needs programs. If you recall, I had shared that there's three RFPs that are going out. One RFP was for Minnesota Senior Care Options that we call MSHO. The second one is, and also includes MSC Plus, which stands for Minnesota Senior Care. Those are for individuals who are 65 and older. And then, the second RFP was for a product called Special Needs Basic Care, and that RFP was for individuals who are between 18 to 64 with a disabling condition. And then the third RFP is for children and families, low-income children and families on the medical assistance or Minnesota Care. The two RFPs, the special needs RFPs, have been complete, and that's what I am bringing before you today. So if you recall, this process involved DHS offering the RFPs, it allowed health plans to respond to those RFPs, and then, across the state, there were groups developed, we had a group along with other counties, and each county had staff assigned to score the RFPs. We did that for Clay County, we had two public health nurses and two social service supervisors score the responders for both of these products. They spent almost $100,000. They spent almost 120 hours reviewing the RFPs and going through a scoring process and then meeting with the regional counties, along with the State Department of Human Services, to go over the scoring criteria. That's been completed and the, I was notified of the responders for our county. So for the first RFP, the M-Show and the MSC Plus, we had four responders for, that wanted to serve residents of our county. Three of those responders, Blue Plus, Medica, and U-Care are our current providers. And under this RFP process, as long as those providers meet the minimum qualifications, they're going to be offered a contract. And the reason for that is the state, these are folks that sometimes are dual-eligible for, and they're also on Medicare. And so we don't want to disrupt their Medicare services by changing their health plan. Fortunately, those three responders scored very high in the process. And our staff, along with consultation with Kathy McKay and Public Health, would recommend those three responders continue in our county for M-Show and MSC Plus. And then in the second RFP for the SNBC product, for folks 18 to 64 with a disabling condition, there were three responders for our county, U-Care being one of them. We currently have U-Care and Health Partners. Health Partners did not respond to the RFP. But even with these two providers currently in our county, 90% of the folks are on U-Care. So having Health Partners not respond will have minimal effect on the recipients in that program. In consultation with our reviewers and Public Health, we are recommending that U-Care continue to be the health plan of choice in our county for the SNBC program. They would get a contract anyway because they're a current responder. The only issue in this particular area is that the State Department of Human Services might ask that we have a second provider so that our recipients have choice. Medica was the second highest responder in this area. However, in consultation, we feel that U-Care meets our needs. They've been a good partner with us because we provide the care coordination under contract with U-Care. And we'd like to just move with the recommendation to DHS that U-Care be our provider in Clay County. This does not require a resolution like it has in times past, so I didn't prepare a resolution for this. I need to respond by Friday to this, I, there's a form I need to complete with what our recommendation are for these products. I'm simply looking for your support to submit that letter as I've indicated today with those health plans.
Okay, so there is a ask for supporting the recommendation for the health plans from our director. Are there questions on that? Commissioner Campbell?
So MA isn't in the picture here with any of this stuff, is it?
It is. So the next RFP, so the third one, which I'm not talking about today, so I'll be coming back before you probably in the next few weeks with the children and families procurement process. That would be for low-income families on medical assistance or Minnesota Care.
That'll be for another day that we're going to-
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Because I will have some questions on that.
Yep. And these, these individuals on these products are also eligible for medical assistance. But they, they're, they serve specialized populations.
Further questions for Rhonda? Board wishes?
I would move the request.
A motion to approve the recommendation from Commissioner Campbell?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Carried. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we have committee reports this morning. Commissioner Ebbinger, would you like to start?
Madam Chair. On the fifth, I virtually attended the Northwest Emergency Communication Board Legislative Committee meeting. We updated on the status of some of the legislative issues that are important to the group. The status of Statute 403, which basically describes the emergency communication system in the state of Minnesota. We were looking for a wide, broad renovation of a lot of the terminology, the changes in technology. All these things were brought in. And we attempted to get the statute updated this session. It didn't get anywhere. And it appears the problem was that the telecom lobbies were not on board with the, with the needs of the state. And we, we will take, as a committee, we'll take a little bit of share of that because the work group we had working with them had not included the telecom people in our conversations. We're going to continue to try and bring this forward in future sessions, and we're going to seek out the input and the collaboration with all stakeholders. Another really major part of what we've been working on is a mental health crisis work group within the legislative committee. We're working with the State 988 Center Director for seamless integration of 988 and 911 services and to develop statewide procedures. We've got about a year to get that done. One of the things to keep in mind is, and what we put in our initial legislative recommendations, is to have a 988 fee, similar to the 911 fee that's currently charged to operate the armor system and to supplement local PSAPs. Unfortunately, in the omnibus bill that DHS moved forward with, the 988 fee's been taken out. I think the assumption, or we think the assumption is because the 911 fees can just basically be used to operate 911 systems and 988 can attach onto that. That's not really fiscally possible, and we're looking right now real closely at state of Illinois. The governors grabbed a number of 911 fees out of their system and are using them for 988 purposes. That's a violation of federal, federal law. And we're seeing where that's going to go. The short version of that is if we're going to have a, a mental health response through a 988 system, it's going to need to be funded, and that's going to have to be looked at in future sessions. That doesn't interfere with our ability to continue to develop protocols and, and state regulations for the implementation of 988. Here locally, it'd be 211. That's something I think is a tech, a technology thing where North Dakota can dial 211, we'll dial, our people can dial 988. I don't know if they're going to be able to get them both interchangeably, but it'll, eventually, when we develop something, it'll go to the same location, which is either going to be, well, to be the dispatch center, but also first link. So we'll see how that works. But again, all these things need to be developed to meet the state requirements that are under consideration. Also discussed, House Bill 3974, which involves the certification of telecommunication 911 operators. And that's in the omnibus bill and is moving forward. We have had real difficulty in getting funding for public safety radios. When the, everybody got new radios when the armor system came on, and there was a lot of federal assistance for that. We are looking at a year coming up now where most of those radios were purchased in the transition into the armor system are going out of warranty. And there's a huge need for the purchasing of, of more radios. That does not appear, if it's going to be augmented by the state of Minnesota at all, it's going to be limited to $1 million in the legislation that's in there now. And that doesn't come anywhere near approaching the needs. Senator Klobuchar and Senator Tina Smith have directed and worked in a $10 million federal funding that's going to go to the BCA, but that's going to be limited to law enforcement radios. And that, again, is not going to be enough to meet the entire need. So that's going to be an ongoing issue. Saturday, May 7th, Commissioner Kaylee and I attended the New American Listening Session, which is part of the Substance Abuse Suicide Prevention Committee that we're on. Karen Nikorski was there. She's chairing the suicide prevention. And Sarah Dixon, hacking, I believe, is, is a consultant they've hired who was also there. The presentation was to discuss results of a survey of well-being among new Americans in Clay County. We identified a need for more outreach to new Americans. This is a topic that culturally, they're very uncomfortable discussing, and there needs to be an outreach amongst the groups that currently work with them. And it was decided that we needed to come with the results of these surveys. We need, if we wanted a discussion with new Americans, we need to go where they are. There was not a real strong attendance. There were some of the community leaders from new American groups, but there wasn't a strong attendance from people in the community. And so there needs to be an outreach to people at meetings that are already going on. Commissioner Kaylee was taking a lot more notes than me and probably has something to augment this, this meeting with.
Commissioner Ebbinger, were, this board had supported the hiring of two diversity coordinators. Were those individuals present at the-
They were both present and very active in, in the discussion.
Thank you.
Good to see. And then Monday, myself and Administrator Larson and a number of staff people attended Recorder's Office Annual Compliance Meeting. Really no bad news. We're 100% compliant, as usual, as to be expected from Ms. Savageill. We did discuss fund balances and discuss using $20,000 of the fund balance right now in the ongoing process of addressing the monuments around the county with surveyors. Currently, we're, we're spending $40,000. The contractor on that said they could do the additional $20,000 worth of work, and it would be a consideration that may be brought before the, the commission here shortly by Ms. Savageill. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebbinger. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. On Tuesday, the 3rd, we had a meeting with MPCA regarding the FEEDLAT issues, and that meeting went very well, very well, excuse me. There was some discussion about losing $3,000 in funding. I think after consideration, that has been modified. And I think the only thing now is there's, that's, that's out there would be a loss of about $350, $350, excuse me, in, in revenues. And there's going to be a letter that MPCA is going to put forward in terms of, of areas that basically can be improved on and recommendations and, and process of what, what needs to be followed. I think the, the meeting went well and, and both Kevin Kastenberg and Craig were, were there and involved with that meeting as well. And, I don't know, Steve? Yeah?
I have a question on that. Is a formal petition still relevant from this board? Or do we need to either redact that or change that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So what we, what we decided is the, is because the board had taken the action to appeal, we, our position was, is we were going to wait for their letter to come before us that outlines what is still needed to be done to formally then, and it, and we basically said based on the conversation we had, it was certainly, Commissioner Kaylee's, in my opinion, that, that if that letter meets those things that we talked about, that, that we would recommend the, that we rescind the, the appeal.
Thank you.
So that, just from a timing standpoint, that's what's going on there.
Thank you.
And I don't know, maybe Commissioner Kaylee or Steve will want to add to that. Then on that evening, I did go and I did attend a public meeting regarding hunting in Oakport, the annexation area of Oakport. It was basically an informational meeting that was put on by the Moritz Police Department, inviting people to go there and, and listen in on, or give their thoughts on, on. The city of Moritz is taking over the enforcement of those flood buyout areas that before was held by the Buffalo Red River Watershed District. The Watershed District has given that over to the city to do. And so there was a, you know, a fairly good turnout, and I would say that the vast majority of them still believe that some form of, of hunting should, should be allowed in that area. But I think it was well done by Moritz Police Department in, in that listening session. I thought it was very well done. On Thursday, the 5th, we had a Clay County Joint Powers Committee. And we did vote through that group to, basically, we're, we've changed the name of that from Clay County Joint Powers Committee to Clay County Intergovernmental Committee. Because we technically have no joint powers authority. And so, so I think from that standpoint, Colleen, we're probably going to have to make sure those, we make those changes on our committee list in terms of the title. The other items that were talked about was the bylaws and operating procedures. And again, we had a little discussion about what that should be called itself. And so what we came up with, instead of it being a Clay County Joint Powers Operating Procedures, it is now going to be called Clay County Intergovernmental Committee Structure. And that basically gives us the, and again, because we're, it's, it's not a bylaws and it's not an op, you know, it's, it's just how we structure. That's how many of your people are going to be members and that type of, those didn't change. So it was just a kind of a formality thing to go along with the change in the name.
Do we need to have a formal?
I, I think according to the, I think according to the committee structure and rules, that committee was able, could do that on their own. I don't think there was anything that needed Steve shaking his head the same way. So I don't think there's any action needed on us other than to change, to formally change our committee name.
Commissioner Campbell, I'm, my question is basically, I think for the record, it should be important that we note that because if someone like yourself has been reporting on the Joint Powers Board and then all of a sudden in the minutes we're reporting on the Intergovernmental Board, I think shouldn't we have an action that changes that committee assignment name?
I-
Oh, yeah, that, we certainly could do that.
Yeah, and, you know, I guess from that standpoint, I think that's fine to do that. So I, you know, if it's, if it's appropriate, I would, I would move that we authorize the changing of the name from Clay County Joint Powers Committee to Clay County Intergovernmental Committee, and that we also approve the recommended Clay County Intergovernmental Committee structure.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve-
Second.
A second by Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carried, thank you for clarification.
Okay, then, last night, I did attend the Buffalo Red River Watershed District Meeting. I went there. There were, my primary reason for going there was some, they were having some discussion about the diversion project and an MOU regarding the Georgetown project. Excuse me. And the MOU that was sent by the diversion authority- And the MOU that was sent by the diversion authority, Tammy Norgard, the attorney for the Buffalo Red, had made some recommended changes to the MOU, and as I listened to them, I thought they were certainly appropriate changes to be made. And ultimately, the Buffalo Red Board did approve the MOU with those recommended changes by their attorney. The other issue was in regards to, there's some additional funding that the diversion, that the diversion authority puts out there for other flood control projects. I think the, I think the original amount that the diversion authority had was 25 million that could be applied for, for other flood control projects. I believe it was the, I don't know if it's a Stony Creek project that's, has applied for some of those funds. There was, and certainly, so the, the board, you know, there was, the attorney did have some issues related to that application, I believe it was, on that funding, and they, they did move along with their current plan to seek those funds. And there was another issue regarding, on the Stony Creek projects. There's been a lot of money that's been spent on it already, but nothing, you know, it's still in the design phase. Commissioner Mojo might be more familiar with that, but there was a resident there that, they had received about one and a half million dollars to clean out that creek. And it's been six years and nothing's been done. And so they did approve moving forward with the cleaning, using that money to clean out that creek. I hope I got the, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure that was a Stony Creek, creek that they're referring to, but, but there was no action to move forward with the additional project other than they're going, I think Member Van Ambergh had, had talked about trying to at least start moving forward with obtaining easements for the rest of that flood control project. There seemed to be some hesitation amongst some of their board members to do that. But again, it's, I think it's still a good project that they should consider keeping on, on their agenda. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Gross?
Unfortunately, I left, I had a meeting last Tuesday on the land meeting on county-owned land, and I left my notes at home, and I know you were there. I hope you.
I've got them.
I hope you got some notes. Same thing with the MRC meeting that I had yesterday morning. I know you were online with the Zoom meeting there too, and I know we talked about the wetlands and protecting the wetlands and making it more available. Also, on Wednesday, I had the detox meeting. They already discussed, we pretty much affirmed now that we, I think we want to go with a one-story building instead of a two-story building, and we're looking at, I don't know, possibly moving it over just a little bit because they're looking at sometime in the far future, mental health adding on to that building. And so we're looking at coming up, deciding with that. We'll have a meeting on May 25th again to go through some of that stuff. But everything's moving along pretty good with Klein-McCarthy, who are running the meetings and coming up with designs and off the building that they're planning for us. Made a few changes on it, and everything going good on that. Those are my three meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Kaye, I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me. I was just going to mention what you did last week, that I'll be missing next week's meeting. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Kaylee?
Yep. So Tuesday, I attended that MPCA, that meeting that Commissioner Campbell reported on already, and I think you covered everything well there. We'll share that letter once we get it, and then we can take action on that if that's the board's wishes. Later that day, I attended the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council kind of leadership meeting to debrief from their report that they gave last Tuesday, and to make some plans for how to improve on that reporting and the data that they're gathering, and to work out our agenda for the next meeting. Then on the 5th, I attended the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County Annual Meeting. I attended that virtually because I had a sick child, which is why I missed our 7:00 AM meeting with the Intergovernmental Committee. At that annual meeting, they reported on how they had wrapped up the year. They did quite well with donors and the PPE or PPP loans that they were able to receive. There was also a presentation on the history of Hispanic people in the Red River Valley, and how that migration occurred, and how those different communities set up their homes here. That was very interesting. Thank you to everyone who participated in that. On the 5th, I had an Early Childhood Initiative meeting, working out the last details for the Kids Fest event, which is their biggest event of the year, and that is coming up on Saturday from 10:00 to noon at Gooseberry Park. Hopefully, the river goes down some more by then. Hopefully, it doesn't rain anymore. But that is going to be a really awesome event to get connected up with services and agencies serving young families in our county. Lots of county groups will be participating in that, like social services. I know that our childcare folks are going to be there promoting the new initiatives that they have, some of the benefits that we just funded for.
Incentives.
Incentives, I couldn't find that word. Incentives, yes, to promote new child cares, opening in family child cares, and also to help support those already established. Saturday, Commissioner Ebbinger already reported on the New American Listening Session. I did want to make a couple of quick corrections. Azad was there, but we did not have that variable, our public health employee there. We did have Neemal Day, who's doing contract work for public health, and she was leading the survey effort. And I do have a copy of that survey. If there's interest, I can give that to Steve, and he can distribute that to everyone. Neemal did a really great job of going door to door to a lot of new Americans in our community to do a survey with them to increase the number of responses that we got. So thank you to her for her efforts on that. And one of the major action steps that we took after that meeting is we're going to have a training on mental health and who to refer people to for our new American leaders in the community, both of like our development agencies and also religious leaders of some of the mosque and other church congregations, because they spoke about how a lot of new Americans will turn to their religious leaders for support, instead of thinking first to go to a different agency. So providing that training for those folks will help, we hope, change some of the stigma for accessing those services and get people to the right services expediently. Oh, and one other correction, the consultant that was there was Karen Pfeifer. And she did a fabulous job of facilitating that discussion. Then on the 9th, so Monday, yesterday, I attended the AMC Legislative Update. One item to note, there was an email that went out from AMC on this, but on June 6th, from 2:00 to 4:00, there's going to be a webinar on the opioid settlement and what that is going to look like for us. So I'm sure we'll want to have a few county staff attending that, and maybe a couple commissioners, to make sure that we know what is coming down the pipeline now that some of those details have been worked out. I also noted that they said there is score funding language in the Senate Environmental Omnibus Bill, and that's something that we have been paying close attention to. What else on here? Interestingly, there is no county program aid in the Senate tax bill. So they really drove in that we should, as we're talking to folks, we should be requesting one-to-one parity and equality for county program aid to local government aid. There are dollars in there for local government aid, but counties need those dollars too, and we need that equity. Oh, and then, we didn't have a meeting, but due to construction in the courthouse building here, the law library is going to be closed this week, and the self-help clinic will be closed as well, because they're doing the tile work in that space. And I believe that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee.
Last week, as Commissioner Gross reported, I did attend with him to the Clay County Lands Committee. We did have an update from Lieutenant Schroeder on law enforcement updates. One piece that, that was, two topics really, was we've, we've had to mitigate some access on some of those buyout properties. I think right now, they've deterred those folks from doing that on those. He did stress, though, that there seems to be a difference of policy or understanding in terms of hunting on MCC JPA land. Currently, we have allow county-owned property, hunting on county-owned property. That's something we've done for a long time. But law enforcement hasn't, one, not been given really the, the rules of what the MCC JPA wants for those lands that they've secured, that they, they currently have, you know, in their possession, certainly because work can happen on those properties. It's not something that we want to have happen just for public safety. I did ask that Steve reach out to AE2S and, and the Lands Group to have that on the MCC JPA Board as a discussion point. I think it's important. It also really is important that we're coordinating with law enforcement exactly what, what is allowed and not allowed. I think those are not topics that we want someone responding to a call, to have to look at a spreadsheet to see what is allowed, so we need to communicate with them. We did talk a little bit about hunting on one of the buyout properties, which I think relays into my last point that I talked about. We did identify a buyout property as a potential location for a partnership similar that, to what we did with soil and water in terms of an application from Pheasants Forever with the Lassard Sam's Heritage Funding. We did that pollinator habitat on Crestwood. That's something that could work out there. As for a reminder for this board, those buyout properties were purchased with bonding dollars. We are not able to sell those properties. They're off of the tax rolls. They are a, a bit of a nuisance in terms of upkeep for the highway department to have to relocate and do upkeep at all of these tiny little properties. So it really has been a good partnership on that Crestwood piece. Hopefully, that will be as well. The, and anything would have to come to this full board for approval. We talked about the gravel tax that's being collected and how we could use it to reclaim the abandoned pits. We do have a substantial amount of pits that have not been reclaimed. Those are, are held with a bond in terms of active permits, but those, the ones we talked about were older, older pits. We talked about the county EAW, the pit EAW that we're currently moving forward on, and we did talk about the lease drafted for the, the farm land, or the, the hay land in township. That property will be set for auction now that we've dealt with the encumbrances. And talked about a piece of, a fractional section of Keene Township north of the county-owned pit. We're talking with DNR on approval for a lease on that. And then I attended the Detox Planning Committee as Commissioner Gross also reported on. The recommendations and plans and budget information, financial information will be coming to this board soon. I know that's something that this board has always been really interested in, weighing in on. We are at a position where we're really excited about the potential of starting that schedule, and we've been working with Klein-McCarthy on crafting that building based on the needs and functions of the grant agreement. Certainly, we need to follow that, but are, are also making sure that the option is open in the future if, if there wanted to be an expansion similar to what we did with our other two properties, the correctional facility and law enforcement. So that, as noted, will come to this board soon. Yesterday, I attended the Minnesota Rural Counties Meeting with Commissioner Gross. And now I lost my agenda. Sorry. We did have an update on, from Senator Ingberitzin, on, on many of the issues of priority for that board. Certainly appreciate his presence in that meeting. They are so busy in St. Paul right now. As said earlier, I think he has been really a champion for the rural, rural counties, and so we appreciate having his presence there. We did have an update from Brian Martenson on the House provision on the drainage reporting and work restrictions. That's something that's really important for the rural counties. And then talked, had a report from Asher Munyon on local emergency managers' grants. There also was such a, an ask to reach out to legislators and reiterate the items of importance for all of us in greater Minnesota, so I appreciate the fact that Commissioner Kaylee attended that legislative update. That's certainly important. I did have discussions last week with Senator Ekin in regards to the bill that has our omnibus bill that has the score funding in there. I think that's really promising. Hopefully, he can garner additional support. He has our strong, we have his strong support on that piece. I did talk to Shannon Full from the chamber to, to basically ask for the, the priorities for this legislative session, asking any additional ways we can help support that. So I was happy to see those pieces on the agenda this morning. And then did reach out to Representative Mark Ward in order to see if we need to provide any further testimony or support on those. Those two have been really solid, and Commissioner, or Representative Keeler as well have been solid for the needs of rural, rural Minnesota, so I appreciate that. And then, I think that concludes my.
Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, I also attended the County Lands Meeting. I wouldn't know if I did reach out to Eric Dodds, and they're going to be adding that to, to a future agenda. They, they have been working with Mark Sloan and our GIS, and they have, they are identified on our county maps online now as MCC JPA, and so we'll be looking at different ways that we can identify whether it's able to be hunted on or not as part of that future plan. Participated in the MCC, or excuse me, MPCA feedlot discussion that Commissioner Kaylee and Commissioner Campbell have addressed on the 14th, or excuse me, the 4th, participated in the detox planning meeting. Again, just to note, Troy, Kathy, and Scott Fettig from Klein-McCarthy did go attend, go do a tour of a gateway, gateway facility in your Inver Grove Heights, and received some, some positive ideas, and also some additional ideas that maybe they don't want to do, that they'll probably be sharing in our future meetings. Again, just to, to point out, I know we brought up, the board has asked that we provide, that Klein-McCarthy provide an estimate on a one-story, a two-story, and a one-story with, with the ability to go up, and that will also be part of that, part of that update that we receive on the 25th. Met on the 4th with Matt, or excuse me, with Lori and Kirk, and talking about some of the, the comments that we had earlier today about future needs for the solid waste department as a whole, and making sure that's all factored in as we move forward. as a whole, and making sure that's all factored in as we move forward. The IGR meeting on the 5th, we attended, that's been addressed. Again, it was nice to see we had some new members from rural Clay County who were part of that attendance. That was actually brought up as an option during our Intergovernmental Retreat, and so the rural counties will be invited moving forward. On the 5th, mentioned, as mentioned earlier, I met with Ben Madsen and talked about the Resource Recovery Project and the Geofone and other additional issues that we'll have with the project moving forward. On the 6th, participated in the legislative session with AMC and MACA. Again, some of the items Commissioner Kaylee has touched on. Again, we're down to two weeks of the regular session. I think there's a pretty large concern right now whether a bonding bill is going to get done at all during the regular session. Of interest, there's 40 legislators that are retiring after this session, and so it's going to be some significant changes. The LGA issue is addressed also at the opioid webinar. I have signed up to attend that, and so if anyone's interested, you can certainly participate there. We talked about $170 million in pension bills for deputies and law enforcement fire. That would shift the employer contribution, and so that would be important for us to know from an impact on our budgets. And also, they're decreasing the period of vesting from 20 years down to 10 years for law enforcement and fire under that bill. Again, there's still some business relief options out there with funding in the House that would potentially have the county acting as a distributor of those funds again, and so we'll see if that makes it through. And also, they just had a part of a session that the counties talked about from a workforce standpoint, that the challenges that they're seeing from a workplace and open jobs is something they haven't seen in decades. And so, on Friday, also talked for about an hour with a potential applicant for the solid waste manager position, had some questions about the county and also specifically about the programs. Met with the annual, on the annual Recorders Compliance Fund on Monday. Commissioner Ebbinger has shared, nothing new to report there. Again, I think that'll be coming, there'll be an ask coming forward on the remonumentation probably in the next week or so. RFP deadlines for medical services was last week. We did receive two different bids, and so we're going to be, James O'Donnell and Carrie Tooten are reviewing those. We'll have some discussion about that prior to bringing that to board. I just wanted to note that work detail has started. It started, I can't remember if, Janelle had mentioned, but they hired a coal stole, and they spent last week in Dilworth helping with cleanup, also did some work with the Government Center, and also some landscaping around campuses. And so for our citizens in our rural cities, they are available. So reach out to Janelle Chaney or Cole Stoll here within the county, or within the state, and get those things set up. Also, just to verify, we've talked about it in the past, we are having a county picnic on June 28th, appreciation picnic for our staff from 11:30 to 1:00. We've also been given clearance from Kathy to restart our pizza, our food options here within the county. Those fundraising dollars generally go to our holiday party, and so in the event that the COVID numbers stay at acceptable level, we'll look to returning back to pre-COVID status there. Just a note for our citizens, again, we're not scheduled to meet, at least currently, on the 5th Tuesday of this month. And looking ahead to next month, just for all of us in our schedule, June 14th, our board meeting has been moved by this board, but to 5:30. And 6:30 that evening will be Board of Equalization, our Appeals and Equalization. And just to note, we've been working with the engineers, opening that should be going live shortly.
Thank you, Steve. Just an item in terms of advertising, I do see that there is a District 4 AMC meeting that's been scheduled in June. I'd like to have that on the upcoming events as well. Further questions, or just comments? Commissioner Campbell?
I just, I want to make the comment, I'm thankful to hear of the progress that's going on with the detox project. I do, I still think it's important at some point soon that, in addition to those planned to be brought here, but they also be brought to the Finance Committee, because we have to figure out how we're going to also pay for all of this stuff. And that's always been part of the Finance Committee's responsibility to do. So in that process, I just hope that can be done as well.
I do appreciate that. That was noted during that meeting, and felt that the first main step was to get it before the full board, depending on, certainly Commissioner Gross had said the one-story is the most favorable, but there will be three options that this board can weigh in on, varying costs, and then that would kick that then to the finance piece as well. But thank you. Any further questions? Colleen, do you have anything? All right, thank you. We are adjourned.